Good morning. Welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for August 13th. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left is Commissioner Tom Rolf. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Tom's left is Brandy Spangler, and she'll be taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have Nico Hash and Keegan Shea, both from the County Attorney's Office. Good morning, gentlemen. And today we have Frank Hornwell, who will be joining us. He is the Chief Financial Officer. Good morning, sir. Just a reminder, there are agendas up front as well as a sign-in sheet. We'd like everyone to sign in so we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. And again, good morning. Right off the bat, we are going to have a special proclamation, and I'm going to turn this one over to Commissioner Rolf, and thank you with a thank you for setting this up and making sure that it was all ready to go today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a real pleasure for us to recognize what's going on in our in our community this weekend with the state notary conference is here, and some of the new advancements that have come on with the notary business. I'd like to invite Lori Hamm from the Secretary of State's office to come forward and tell us a little bit about the the conference and about the reason why there's people coming from Europe to attend the conference today, this weekend.
Welcome. Yeah, you can pull that down. Make sure the green light's on as well there on that microphone, if you would, and then introduce yourself for the record and welcome, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lori Hamm. I'm the Notary and Certifications Administrator for the Montana Secretary of State's office. And I am delighted and honored and humbled that you are willing to recognize Montana's 12,000 notaries for their job that they do in facilitating almost every important transaction that people engage in. You know, we can't buy a house, sell a property, quick claim deeds, powers of attorney, adoption transactions, so many important transactions involve the work of a notary public. And we're delighted this year to host the sixth biennial notary conference here in Helena. We started in 2012, and it's grown every year. This year, we expect to have about 250 notaries here in Montana. But notaries from all over the country have heard about this program and are joining us. So notaries from Florida and California and New York and Maryland and Texas and all over Iowa are coming to see what we've done in our office. Some of you may know, in 2015, we were the second state to adopt online notarizations, allowing notaries public to perform notarial acts via communication technology. We enhanced that and broadened that in 2019 with probably one of the most forward-thinking and looking notary statutes in the country. And I have so many people from around the country to thank for their assistance in that because we, I think we have the best notary laws in the country that are going to be able to go forward as technology improves, increases, and changes. And we don't have to keep going back to the legislature to keep up with that. One of the things that we were able to do as a result of the 2019 law is enact what we call electronic apostles. And apostles are basically passports for paper. When you have an international transaction, you have to submit documentation to carry that transaction off, for example, closing an estate or a real estate purchase in another country. Your documents have to be certified with an apostle before they will be accepted in that other country. It's one of those things you never hear about until you have to do it. You almost always have to do it on a very short timeframe. And typically, in the paper world, the apostle process took at least three weeks, usually a couple of months. And the world just doesn't move that slow anymore. So we have been on a mission in our office to facilitate the adoption of electronic apostles in the United States. And in conjunction with our notary conference this week, we are doing the EAPP. The Electronic Apostle Program is being adopted in the United States. We've been on a pilot program now for about a year and a half. We've had over 650 electronic apostles processed and submitted and accepted worldwide in 54 different countries. Something like 44 different types of documents that have been accepted. So we're really excited to have been in that leadership position, and now we're in a position to share that result with the rest of the country and hopefully encourage them to come on board. So that is what Thursday and Friday, we're going to be all about notaries, the work they do, and the work that we now are able to do internationally. A Montana notary can actually notarize a document for somebody who lives, works, and is currently residing anywhere in the world, from anywhere in Montana, and get that document to them virtually immediately. So we're kind of turning a very long-drawn-out antiquated process into 21st century technology. So we're really excited about it, and certainly all of you are welcome if you'd like to attend either the EAPP Symposium on Thursday, basically all day from nine until five, or the notary conference, which kind of overlaps there. It'll start at 1:30 on Thursday afternoon and go all day Friday. So thank you again for this opportunity to share our exciting news with you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And I think the opportunity for us to recognize the great work that you and your office have done to put Montana on the forefront of this new technology is wonderful. I understand you have folks coming from the Hague. Is that right?
Yes, the Secretary General of the Hague Conference, Dr. Christoph Bernasconi, is our keynote speaker for the EAPP Symposium. And Melissa Ford, who is the Secretary of the Apostle Convention, is also going to be here, God willing, and the planes aren't late. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lori. Appreciate your coming. And now I'd like to read the proclamation, and it goes into a little more in-depth. Here's the proclamation from Lewis and Clark County. "Notary Public Appreciation Day. Whereas in one of the first acts of the first legislative session of the Territory of Montana, the Office of Notary Public was created. Since 1864, land deals, deeds acknowledged by notaries public and recorded in the county clerk and recorder's office in every one of Montana's 56 counties have attested to the influx of pioneers who settled the frontier of the Big Sky Country. And whereas following the first glimmer of gold found in Silver Bow Creek that same year, prospectors discovered silver, copper, sapphires, and other precious minerals and gems buried beneath the majestic Rocky Mountains. Thousands of mining claims attested by notaries public speak to the untold riches of the Treasure State. And whereas Montana is now home to over 1 million people whose properties are conveyed, contracts are honored, adoptions are finalized, estate plans are established, and medical wishes are respected because documents bear the authenticating signature and seal of a notary public. And whereas there are approximately four and a half million notaries public in the United States and over 12,000 active-commissioned notaries public in Montana, whose dedication, integrity, and service continues to honor the tradition of all notaries public across this great country. And whereas we are joined this week by the Secretary General of the Hague Conference, Christoph Bernasconi, the Secretary of the Apostle Convention, Melissa Ford, the U.S. Liaison to the Hague Conference, William Fritzlin, notary experts, notary administrators, and notaries public from all over this great country who have gathered here to recognize the pioneering efforts of Montana and the seven states now offering electronic apostles to facilitate international transactions from the United States. And whereas the duties and responsibilities of notaries public are complex and significant, and the 2024 Montana Notary Conference is providing over 60 hours of education to hundreds of notaries public, increasing the knowledge, skills, and understanding of the professional obligations inherent to the office they hold. And whereas this year, 2024, as we observe the 160th anniversary of the Territory of Montana, of Montana, and the 135th birthday of the great state of Montana, we also celebrate lasting impressions that notaries public leave on the history, the land, the spirit, and the aspirations of the people they serve. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lewis and Clark County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 16th, 2024, as Notary Public Appreciation Day in Lewis and Clark County dated today, 13th day of August, 2024." And thank you for all the great work that you and your office have done, and thank you for bringing such great attention and respect to the work of notaries public around the state of Montana. Thank you very much. If you'd like to come forward, we'd like to make you a presentation and get a picture.
Thank you very much again. Very much appreciate your work, the work of the 12,000-plus notaries public in Montana. All right. We will move on to our regular business here. The next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Pine Cove Consulting. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works Director. Before you today is a contract with Pine Cove Consulting to replace and install cameras in Lewis and Clark County Public Works Facility Complex located at 3402 Cooney Drive. These cameras will provide 30 days of footage with the option of free unlimited archives backed up on the Verkata Command Cloud Service and a subscription license of five years per camera. The replacement of the new cameras is necessary because existing camera systems is HIC Vision, which has vulnerabilities and is not compliant with the National Defense Authorization Act and is susceptible to cyber attacks. So for cybersecurity reasons and working with our Information Technology Department, the cameras should be replaced. Staff recommends approval of this contract with Pine Cove Consulting for a total sum not to exceed $113,000, And the work should be completed by July 1 of 2025. And I authorize, request the authorization of the Chair to sign a couple of contract documents, and will be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. How about questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Pine Cove Consulting as explained by Jenny Chambers.
Second. Oh, sorry. Second. Move to second and approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Um.
Commissioner Payne?
Well, I should have asked Jenny this. Does this involve the security of the sheriff's impoundment? You know, the cars that are impounded by law enforcement and held as, for whatever reason?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Payne, yes, it certainly does. So when I talked about the Public Works Facility Complex, that's on 3402, it would be all of the activities on that 20-acre parcel, which includes Sheriff's Office impoundment, storage area, plus other areas that they store some of their equipment in as well. So it's the whole complex. There is a cost share with the Sheriff's Office. This is funded by, currently by programs within the Departments of Public Works, a percentage of each of the different programs down there, including a small percentage from the Sheriff's Office as well, so that the makeup of that funding is allocated based upon all the programs that operate out of the Public Works Facility Complex.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We'll ask one more time for any public comment. Any public comment? Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Thank you, Jenny. I just appreciate you bringing it forward. And as you described in your presentation, it's one of those things that makes us compliant with current law and upgrades our system and makes it more safe from cyber attacks or various activities from the cyber world, anyway. So thank you. All right. Anything else, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-86 to levy and assess the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District number 2024-1. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is the public hearing regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2024-86 to levy and assess a special assessment of $894 for a 15-year debt service upon benefiting properties within the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District. This assessment will be used to repay financing of district improvements. The resolution also includes an annual assessment of $320 upon benefiting properties to provide annual maintenance on these improvements. This is the third and final public hearing in the RID creation process. This district is located to the east of Glass Drive and about a mile north of Lincoln Road. There are nine benefiting properties in the district. So you can see Lucky Strike Road just below the foothills RID that's in green. This district is not delineated in a color yet, but you can see the full extent of Lucky Strike Road going out with a little cul-de-sac kind of at the end right below that green shape there. The Resolution of Intention to Create the Lucky Strike RID was passed by the Commission on May 16, 2024, after receiving a petition signed by 55.6% of property owners within the district. This opened a 30-day comment and protest period, and legal notice of the intention to create the district was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on May 18 and May 25, 2024. The comment and protest period closed on June 21 with no protest received. The Lucky Strike RID was created through public hearing by the Commission on June 27, 2024. The general characters of improvement, general character of improvements for this district includes drainage remediation and culvert installation, the addition of approximately 1,347 cubic yards of gravel road surfacing, and watering, grading, and compaction of the new material over the full extent of Lucky Strike Road, which is approximately 4/10 of a mile in length. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $78,079. Each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $894 per year. The general character of maintenance includes snow plowing and sanding, culvert and drainage maintenance, grading, gravel maintenance, and other items as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $2,880, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $320 per year. The total proposed assessment is $1,214 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping to that maintenance assessment after the improvement loan is repaid. Upon passage of the Resolution to Create the Lucky Strike RID at the end of June, legal notice of this public hearing to levy and assess the district was mailed to all benefiting property owners and also published in the Helena Independent Record on July 20 and July 27, 2024. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2024-86 to levy and assess the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as you said, this is the third and final step. Yeah, yeah, we're there, right? Yes. Levying assess. Yes, we're there. The final step. And it is a process. So we've made it here. So thank you for guiding us to this point. And I think I'm pretty good to go. Any questions, Commissioners, at this point?
For the benefit of anybody that might be watching online, the area that we're involved here, can you kind of be a little more specific on?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, so we're talking about Lucky Strike Road, which hopefully you can see in the center of your screen there. And you can see the nine benefiting properties that surround each side of the road that will be included in this district.
Okay, all right. And it goes, it basically starts at Glass Drive, goes over to where that green section comes down.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Rolf, that's correct. So you'll see that boundary map soon. You know, once we work with the GIS department, this district will also come up on this map and be delineated there. And you'll see the southern part of the boundary will just kind of follow that irrigation canal, kind of in a curve shape there to the south.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for pointing that out. Anything else? Yes, Commissioner?
Just looking at this, I first thought that is a pretty hefty tax burden we're adding on. But on the other hand, you've got 51, 55% of the property owners wanting to do this and no objections. Apparently, people think this is worth their, putting their money where their mouth is, and they want that road taken care of. So good job, Jessica.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Anything else?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. How about public comment? Anything you'd like to add today? Any public comment, gentlemen? Okay. Oh. Good morning, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Ken Liston. I've been involved in this from the start of it. And I'd just like to say that Jessica's job on this has been outstanding. The interactions that I've had with her staff and the planning has been very good, and we're very happy with what's going on out there. Yes, we do want this done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Liston. Appreciate that. And I absolutely agree with your comments about our staff, the wonderful job they do. Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right, we'll close public comment, Commissioners. Any further discussion and/or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt Resolution 2024-86 to levy and assess the Lucky Strike Rural Improvement District number 2024-1 as explained by Ms. Makas.
Second.
Move to second and approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? Jessica, again, thank you very much. Appreciate the work. And back at all of the folks that are on Lucky Strike that have been participating and bringing this forward, I just commend you for taking responsibility for your road and your neighborhood and making sure it is how you like it. So we appreciate that and appreciate the understanding that the county works very hard on the everybody roads, which are those that we all drive and can attribute to a particular set of citizens or a neighborhood or something like that. And so when citizens come forward and take responsibility for the road in front of their homes, it's always a commendable action. So thank you for doing that. All right, Commissioners, anything else? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. On we go. All right, next item on the agenda is Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments. This will finalize this thing.
That's Mr. Chair. Commissioners, again, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Attached for your consideration is a copy of the Intercap Loan Application to be submitted to the Montana Board of Investments. This loan request is in the amount of $78,079 and is intended to fund the road improvements within the Lucky Strike RID. Improvements include drainage remediation and culvert installation, the addition of gravel road surfacing and watering, excuse me, watering, grading, and compaction of the new material over the full extent of Lucky Strike Road, which is approximately 4/10 of a mile in length. Benefiting property owners within the RID will be assessed $894 per year for a period of 15 years until the debt is repaid. Resolution 2024-86 to levy and assess the Lucky Strike RID was adopted by the Board earlier this morning to secure that loan repayment. The Intercap program uses a variable interest rate set on February 16 of each year. Currently, the interest rate is 5.75%. The 10-year average rate is 2.89%, and the overall average since the program began in 1987 is 3.9%. Intercap applications are submitted electronically, and a copy of the online application has been included in the packet for your review. If approved today, the Public Works Department will submit a final electronic application and move forward with the preparation of a limited solicitation for the improvements in Lucky Strike RID, which would be solicited after approval of the loan application by the Montana Board of Investments. Staff recommend approval of the attached loan application, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you very much. How about questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Just for the folks that might be watching, this is normal procedure. So when an RID is created and there are improvements involved, often the money does not exist to accomplish those improvements. So we use the Intercap Loan Program to do that. And the last action we took was to guarantee that loan. Essentially, the taxpayers have agreed to move that forward on their annual tax bill to repay that loan. So now we go through the loan process. And this is common procedure for these RIDs that have an improvement at the outset.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. These Intercap program loans are perfect for these rural improvement districts. The Montana Board of Investments makes it very easy for us to go through that process as a county entity. And but as part of that process, we have to attach all of the resolutions, the Resolution of Intention to Create the District, the Resolution to Create the District, and also that Resolution to Levy and Assess the District, which we passed this morning. And we also have to attach the publication requirements that legally noticed, the steps and public hearings required in this process. All of that has to be uploaded along with this application, and we'll have that final step completed this morning. So we're ready to move forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Item. Okay. How about public comment on this? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, seeing no public comment forward, Commissioners? Motion, please.
Chairman Hunt House and I move that we approve the, we approve or adopt?
Either will work.
Okay. I move that we adopt the Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments as presented by Jessica Makas.
Second.
Moved in second and to approve or adopt the Intercap Loan Application as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Again, thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, this, this is a community, a local neighborhood coming together to improve their roads and sharing the cost of doing that. It's what the process is set up for. And I would act, I'd like to echo what you said about applauding them for moving forward and, and getting in this gym.
All right. Anything else? Okay, with that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good luck. All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-87 to levy and assess the Orafino Rural Improvement District number 2024-2. Again, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Today is the public hearing regarding the final adoption of Resolution 2024-87 to levy and assess a special assessment of $909 for a 15-year debt service assessment upon benefiting properties in the Orafino Rural Improvement District. This assessment will be used to repay financing of district improvements. The resolution also includes an annual assessment of $230 upon benefiting properties for, to provide annual maintenance on these improvements. This is the third and final public hearing in the RID creation process. This district is located to the west of North Montana Avenue and directly across North Montana from the Treasure State Acres subdivision. There are a total of 36 benefiting properties in the district. So we can see this district highlighted in pink. There is also a park district that almost overlaps this entire bound, boundary, but I've left the blue highlighter on so that you can see the actual boundary of the district before you today. The resolution of intention to create the Orafino RID was passed by the Commission on May 23, 2024, after receiving a petition signed by 75% of property owners within the district. This opened a 30-day comment and protest period, and legal notice of the intention to create the district was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on May 25 and June 1, 2024. The comment and protest period closed on June 28 with no protest received. The Orafino RID was created through public hearing by the Commission on July 2, 2024. The general character of improvements includes asphalt paving and chip ceiling on the full extent of Menlo Park Road, the full extent of Homestake Drive, the existing hard surface portion of Loadstar Road from North Montana to Bernice Drive, and approximately 487 feet of Bernice Drive starting at Menlo Park Road. Financing of these improvements is estimated to total $317,641. Each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a 15-year debt service assessment of $909 annually. The general character of maintenance includes snow plowing and sanding, pothole patching, crack sealing, sweeping, chip sealing, drainage maintenance, and other maintenance as needed to preserve the road improvements. Annual maintenance is estimated to total $8,280, and each benefiting property is proposed to be levied a maintenance assessment of $230 per year. The estimated total proposed assessment is $1,139 per property per year for the first 15 years, and then dropping to the maintenance assessment after the improvement is repaid. Upon passage of the resolution to create the Orafino RID at the beginning of July, legal notice of this public hearing to levy and assess the district was mailed to all benefiting property owners and also published in the Helena Independent Record on July 20 and July 27, 2024. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2024-87 to levy and assess the Orafino Rural Improvement District. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none? Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-87 to levy and assess the Orafino Rural Improvement District number 2024-2 as explained by Ms. Makas.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Vaughn, next item on the agenda is Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments related to the Orafino Rural Improvement District.
Okay. Again, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Attached for your consideration is a copy of the Intercap Loan Application to be submitted to the Montana Board of Investments. The loan request is in the amount of $317,641 and is intended to fund the road improvements within the Orafino RID. The improvements include asphalt paving and chip ceiling on the full extent of Menlo Park Road, full extent of Homestake Drive, the existing hard surface portion of Loadstar Road from North Montana to Bernice Drive, and approximately 487 feet of Bernice Drive starting at Menlo Park Road. Benefiting property owners within the RID will be assessed $909 per year for a period of 15 years until the debt is repaid. Resolution 2024-87 to levy and assess the Orafino RID was adopted to secure this loan repayment. The Intercap program uses a variable interest rate that's set in, on February 16 of each year. Currently, the interest rate is 5.75% with a 10-year average of 2.89%, and the overall average since the program began in 1987 is 3.9%. Intercap applications are submitted electronically, and a copy of the online application has been included in the packet for your review. If approved today, we will submit that final application and move forward with the preparation of a bid for the improvements in Orafino RID, which would be, which would be finalized after the application is approved by the Montana Board of Investments. Staff recommend approval of the attached loan application. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
Any questions? All right, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any no public comment? Commissioners, a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Intercap Loan Application to the Montana Board of Investments as described by Jessica Makas.
Second. Moved in second and approved the Intercap Loan Application as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Again, thank you. And thanks to the folks in Orafino Rural Improvement District as they have chosen to take this on and are willing to take this on, and it's great. So I hope that their project goes well and, and is well, well, uh, what's the term I'm looking for? It's, uh, it'll come to me. I'll remember. Anyway, let's, let's vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm gonna. Has that ever happened to anybody?
You're just, I think he's doing this to make me feel better because it happens frequently with me.
All right, it'll come to me. I'm gonna keep working on it here. All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-88 to levy and assess the Valley View Farms Rural Improvement District number 2015-10.
Okay, last one for this morning.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Jessica Makas, Special District's Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. And today we'll be holding public hearing to hear comments and objections regarding the final adoption of a resolution to levy and assess an annual special assessment upon each benefiting property within the Valley View Farms Rural Improvement District. There are four benefiting properties in the Valley View Farms RID, and you can see this, this district highlighted in bright green right in the center of your screen. This is just off Walter Drive. Valley View Farms RID was created in 2015 to maintain about 900 feet of Walter Drive and all of Hearth Side Court. Maintenance of the district includes snow removal and sanding, grading, gravel maintenance, soil stabilization through magnesium chloride application, and other maintenance as necessary to preserve road improvements. The Special District's program staff analyze RID budgets every year and look at projected revenue compared to annual anticipated expenditures. We often recommend increases to RID assessments to meet projected expenditures. However, we also recommend assessment decreases when we have a projected cash balance that we think will grow beyond what is needed for maintenance. The total maintenance assessment for Valley View Farms RID has been $2,600 per year or $650 per property per year. We estimate that, estimate the total cost of maintenance will be $2,200 per year and recommend a decrease of $100 per property per year for a total assessment of $550 per property per year. Legal notice of the assessment in the public hearing was sent to all benefiting property owners and published in the Helena Independent Record on July 20 and July 27. As of yesterday, no written testimony has been received. Staff recommend approval of the resolution to levy and assess the district and lower the maintenance assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what we like to see and hear. Any questions, comments? Yeah, Commissioner?
Yeah, Jessica, could you move the picture of the map out so I have a better idea where this is?
Commissioner Payne, you can see Canyon Ferry Road just to the south there in green.
Thank you.
And this is a decrease, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, yes, this is a decrease.
Do we need to do a proclamation? How many times have we seen a decrease?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, we don't see a lot of them right now. We have this one for the maintenance assessment this year. In 2021, we had, I think, six or seven of them that were passed before you were a Commissioner. So we did see this a little bit more frequently as we began the analysis of this budget. Certainly something that we keep an eye on for all of our rural improvement districts and, and do whenever we see the, the opportunity to do so based on the budgeting analysis that we perform.
This is the way it's supposed to work, and it's just so gratifying to, to see, yes, these things do pit. Sometimes they go down. Thank you.
Yes, prior to the inflationary cycle we've been in here, we had them a little more regular, regularly. Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Questions coming? How about public comment on this one? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, how about a motion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-88 to levy and assess Valley View Farms Rural Improvement District number 2015-10 as explained by Ms. Makas.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
I'm happy to vote for a pet tax decrease.
Yes. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And prior, when I, what I was trying to, I still can't come up with the word I was thinking, but I was just like, I hope they find value and I hope they're satisfied with the decision they made and that they get the product that they wanted out of that. But I was gonna sum it up in some, you know, eloquent way, but I lost it. So, anyway, there we go. We're at the time in the meeting where we will take public comment on any item that's under the jurisdiction of the, of the Commission but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.